Good morning, everyone. I want to welcome you to the Tuesday, April 23rd, 2013 Board of Supervisors Meeting. We will begin with a flag salute led by County Council Jerry Carden.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the statement of meeting procedures?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors Meeting of Tuesday, April 23rd, 2013. Agendas are available on the table at the back of this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Anne. Now is the time for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board on any item that is not on the agenda, now is the time to come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Sally Brew from Valley, and I'm here to bring you up to date on our activities for the Friends of Squaw Valley. I'm on the board. You heard from us early in January, and so I just wanted to bring you a little up to date on that. In the end of January, we had a meeting in Squaw Valley at which Jennifer Montgomery spoke and Alex Fish, and they discussed the EIR process. And Chevis Jose, who is the VP of Development in the village, also spoke. And then following month, we had a Friends of Squaw Valley meeting with the community, and we heard the concerns of the community, and these are not unusual concerns. They were density, traffic, loss of community character, buildings and heights. And then Chevis followed up that meeting. A few weeks later, we sent him a summary of the concerns. So he gave, he had, we had a meeting with him several weeks later. There were about 70 or 80 community people there, in which Chevis gave us a KSL response to our concerns. And in another activity we've had, we shared a booth on Earth Day with Sierra Watch. We had many, many people stop by and look at the whole picture of the development. And we had many people that signed up for our emails. There was much interest. We've also had letters to the Sierra Sun. We've had articles in the Moonshine Inc. This is all part of our outreach as, from the Friends of Squaw Valley. So I think, as we said to you before, our goal is not to stop the project. Our goal is really to mitigate this project. And we would like to ideally come up with a village plan that we can all live with. For instance, the Grand Camp. The Grand Camp is what was originally called the Mountain Adventure Aquatic Center, and that's 120,000 square feet with 80,000 square feet of wet and 40,000 square feet of dry. And so that's a very large building, four to six stories, and it is attached to a hotel that is eight stories high. So you can imagine this massive structure, the Grand Camp with its hotel. As you drive into the valley, it'll be on your left as you enter the village. It's just a huge, dense project. So I really urge you to go see the village model. I think you've heard about it, and it is open this afternoon, I do believe, and it's open in the mornings and afternoons, and I think on Saturday. But once, this is a KSL model, and that can give you an idea of the phases, or as you probably know, there are a number of phases. That will show you Phase One, where several large hotels are going up. And so I thank you for the time to hear about what we are doing, and I hope you continue to follow what some of our efforts are. And we do hope that we'll have a chance to talk with you more in the future about what some of our alternative plans are. So thank you very, oh, one other thing I wanted to mention. We are distributing cards that has our mission on it, which is, we're a forum whose mission is to advocate for environmentally sustainable, economically viable, aesthetically compatible development in Squaw Valley by preserving its community character. And we also have, with Sierra Watch, have some bumper stickers. So thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the board on an item that's not on the agenda? Good morning.
Good morning. Sandy Evans Hall with the Northlake Tahoe Chambers CBB and Resort Association, and I just thought since I wasn't on the agenda, you would be missing me terribly, and so I wanted to give you just a little update of some of the things we've been working on, so that you don't have a formal agenda item from us. First of all, I want to say that our marketing program and the things that we're doing are really starting to gain speed and momentum. And we changed our creative agency this year. We're now with a company out of San Francisco called School of Thought, and they have been extraordinary in terms of developing an image in the San Francisco marketplace, as well as LA and San Diego. And our initial reports back from our consumer awareness studies have shown that it's really been working. We also are working on our Iron Man event, which is going to be happening this September, and we're getting ready to be able to go out to the public and let them know exactly the routes and where they can get around and how they're going to be transported. So all of those pieces are finally coming together, and we're really grateful to you and Placer County and your health and safety for helping make that happen. We're working on an X Games bid, and we just have gone into contract with a group called Wasserman Media Group, and they will be helping us put that bid together to make it the strongest bid that we can possibly do for ESPN. And it's, it's, they have, they have been successful, at least, in putting a bid together for the Chicago X Games, for a summer X Games event. So they're, they're very familiar with the whole process, and we'll be working with them over the next two months, and this bid is going to be due in June. We are really excited with the kind of the sports initiatives that we've been going after. Triple Crown Sports is one of those that is now here in our community. I was fortunate to work with them for about 20 years in Steamboat Springs, and they're an excellent group that puts on fast pitch softball tournaments, baseball tournaments for young boys, brings families into our area, and we're really excited to be able to host them up here. Our sales efforts have really been going gangbusters. This year was a down year, but we're looking out in the next two to three years, and we're really increasing our group sales. So that's going to be exciting in terms of what that's going to do to our TOT. That's partially because we have added a salesperson on our staff, which is really focusing on the California corporate market, as well as we have another salesperson who's working on the association national market. So we're really excited about the outcomes. We are looking right now, we've gotten a booking report that shows our summer bookings through this, this summer, all the way through September, and just about every month is up double digits from 30 to 50 percent, and September is up 196 percent. So guess why? Iron Man, right?
Yeah.
And we've got two tough mutters coming into the valley this, this year.
Go ahead, you.
Can I go ahead?
Sure.
Just a couple more things.
Yeah.
We're going to be bringing forward in the next month or so an integrated work plan for infrastructure and transportation. We are going to be looking at a transit vision, which we're working on right now. We have costed out a, about three, four scenarios that we're going to be taking a look at as, as what we can do from a funding standpoint, what those funding mechanisms might be, and how we can possibly provide a transit system that would reduce the dependency on the automobile buyer visitors. We're going to be looking at a skier shuttle again. We had one this year, and we're going to see if we want to continue that. Our water shuttle is going to be getting out and on the water June 27th this year, and we're looking at extending those hours so that you can actually go out to dinner and use that water shuttle. We are really expanding our trail systems and putting dollars where those trails are. So Homewood Trail, Dollar Trail, Martis Trail, all of those components are really important to us. And wayfinding signage, we're completing a manual that'll actually show us throughout the entire Placer County area where those signs should be located and where there are right-of-way's and what the cost of those signs should be and the type of sign that should go there. So we hope to be able to start installing signage this year, and we're really excited about that. And we had a great golf course open house where we invited the citizens to come and tell us what they wanted about all different parts of that golf course, and we'll be giving you a report on that shortly. We have met with the Truckee Tomorrow Citizen Group, which is actually interested in joining our marketing cooperative. So we'll be working with them to see how we can equitably do that. And we have a board seat open, which we hope to fill by a board appointment this next week, and that would be for the end of this year, and then they would run for election in our general election. Andy Worth has resigned, but we'll be hopefully filling that with somebody of equal kind of prestige in the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? Mr. Kratz.
Good morning. Chairman, members of the board, Peter Kratz with the Placer County Public Works Department. Most of you drove by the Tahoe City Transit Center today, I think, and recently completed last fall. We're pleased to announce that as, as of yesterday, we just received a National American Public Works Association Award, a pretty prestigious award that will be received in Chicago in August. So it's a pretty big deal for us. On the county website, we have an architectural award that's been posted here the last few days, and this was just received yesterday. So we're very excited about receiving additional awards for this facility that encourages multiple uses of transportation for the Northlake Tahoe area, and we're very excited to report that. Thanks.
Well, congratulations. We appreciate that. Yeah. Anyone else under public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back for the supervisors committee reports. Any committee reports? No, I guess we're commuted out. All right. Nothing there on the supervisors committee reports. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda, items eight through 23, have been recommended for approval by the county executive department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. Anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and the item will maybe move for discussion. I also wanted to announce that most any purchasing or contracts that we approve under consent are $250,000 or less. Working with the CEO, we're going to be looking at raising that level. It's kind of disconcerting to see staff members waiting in through a long board meeting to have an item approved. So we'll be looking at raising that level. We're not sure, maybe to 350,000, maybe 500,000, but just wanted to make that announcement to make our meetings go smoother and have, have folks get back to work instead of watching us do our business. So any items on the consent agenda that need to be pulled?
Yes. At the request of our gracious host, Mr. Parsons, I'd like to ask that we hear 9A separately.
All righty. Any others?
Yeah, just a comment on 9A. I know that there's been a lot of discussion with regards to trying to make the process a lot more expedient. I will say that the proposal that's on the table now, I could not support in any way, shape, or form if we're going to take away the public's right to contest their tax before the Board of Supervisors. I would support another type of alternative, maybe putting the, having the CEO review it before it comes to the Board of Supervisors on appeal as part of the process. And that's all I got to say about that. I'll, I'll leave my comments when this comes back.
All right. Any other comments? Anybody in the audience want to?
Are we hearing 9A now, or did you want to adopt the rest of the consent first?
Let's adopt the rest of the consent agenda first.
So moved.
Moved and seconded to adopt the remaining items on the consent agenda, all those, oh, it's roll call vote, please.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Yerwer?
Yes. Thank you. Now we'll move to 9A.
Thank you.
Good morning. Jerry Yam is Director of Administrative Services, and the item before you today was ordinance to introduce, to introduce an ordinance to amend Article 4.16 of the Transit Occupancy Tax Code regarding definitions, impositions, amounts of tax, exemptions, registration, reporting, tax determination, waiver and appeal process, and right of inspection and violations. And this was as a result of the election that occurred in June and the passage of Measure F. So truly, no new taxes were being, were being recommended during this process. It was generally a administrative cleanup of the ordinance as it stood today, and basically as a result of the various types of ordinance, or I'm sorry, various types of audits that we've had throughout, where we were trying to add clarity to the ordinance to help with the enforcement of the ordinance. So that's where my department, especially Revenue Services Division, who does the collection, and the auditor's office, when we go audit various operators that are not complying with, with the ordinance as it is written today, we were trying to, based, based on what we learned from the audits, we were trying to clean up the ordinance to ensure that as their business models change, that our ordinance would address those types of changes that were occurring with the TOT program. Certainly, some of the items that have come up in Supervisor Duran, we had a discussion on this. We can go back and address, but at this point, that is the way the ordinance was being presented today. I'm open to any questions or new direction the board might have with, with the updates that we're requesting.
Any other board comments?
I just wanted to make clear that it's my understanding, and I'm going to ask Mr. Parsons to come up and just confirm this. It's my understanding that there's two, I would say, distinct sets of concerns relating to this. The first is just the sort of process, not of the actual ordinance adoption, because that's in county code, we read it once, we give it a period of time for public comment, and we read it again. So while there may be specific concerns about some of the specific language in the ordinance, I think that the initial concern is public outreach to groups and entities which might be affected by some of these changes, whether they're administrative changes or policy changes. I sit on the Air Pollution Control District Board, and one of the things they do whenever we make any rule changes or change any language to any of our rules and regulations that we're required to enforce is staff identifies, in a, in a rough sense, what's going to need to happen, then they do outreach to those specific groups that would be potentially impacted by the changes in the rulemaking, and identify any specific questions or concerns that those folks would have, have the conversations ahead of time, and then really craft the language, both based on Cal EPA and federal EPA, which is usually what drives our changes, but also based on the input of the groups that might potentially be affected. Speaking with County Council, he indicated that really, we do probably a handful of these changes over the course of the year, not too many. And so I would just suggest that from a procedural standpoint, not just you, and I'm not putting this on you at all, Jerry, so please don't take this at all personally, I would just suggest that as a county, we try to recreate that same model that the APCD uses, where we do that outreach ahead of time, understand what the concerns are, and, and make them part when possible, knowing that we can't always honor the requests that people would make of us. Make them part of our process ahead of time. Doesn't sound like it would probably create that much more work in, in all our lives, and I think frankly, it would create a better situation when we come to public readings like this, where people are aware ahead of time of what the proposal is, have been involved in the process. And as I say, may not get what they want out of it, but at least have, have been part of it, so.
Great recommendation. And we did host two meetings. I think in early April, I hosted a meeting for the Tahoe PUD, just to introduce the ordinance to, to those folks on that board. And then last week, I had a, hosted another meeting with the Tahoe Sierra Board of Realtors. Great feedback from both organizations. Certainly felt that the changes that they're requesting are not anything that we could not address, working together through the process, certainly between first and second readings. So I, I hear what you're saying, and we certainly can work on prior to maybe perhaps a ordinance being introduced that more outreach is done with, with, especially the operators that are going to be impacted.
And just so I'm clear, you had a meeting with the PUD or with the Resort Association?
We had, the first one was with the PUD, and then the second one was with the Tahoe Board of Realtors.
Okay.
Tahoe Sierra Board of Realtors.
Okay. And was there any outreach done to the Northlake Tahoe Resort Association and their board?
Not at this time, no.
Okay.
Nope.
That was the Resort Association board that held that conversation.
Okay. Thank you. That helps, because I couldn't figure out how the PUD was playing into the discussion, because they're not, they don't have any responsibility for TOT. Okay. So, and then, you know, I understand that there are potentially specific issues with some of the language. What I would suggest, based on what I've heard from Supervisor Duran, is that we defer for two weeks taking action on this. We spend the next two weeks until our May 7th board meeting, doing maybe a little bit more outreach to the individual board members and also to individuals in the community who may still have some concerns about this.
Yeah, and just to add something, never one to dodge a teaching method or a teaching opportunity here. This isn't directed at you, Jerry, but I, I've seen some other things inserted in other documents that just come out of nowhere, and I ask myself, how did this get in there? If it's going to be an issue that, that's going to, you know, be a due process issue or something that's going to be real important, I think people really need to vet and do the diligence before they bring it to the Board of Supervisors, and we need to have an, an understanding of exactly what you're trying to accomplish, because some of us are pretty smart folks, and we can kind of maybe give you some guidance on, on whether or not what you're trying to accomplish can be accomplished through a better alternative.
Understood.
I'm wondering, do we want to delay to the second meeting in May so that we can really send letters out to all affected?
Yeah, actually, our CEO is suggesting that we delay this to our second meeting in May so that we can make sure that we adequately do outreach to the folks who would be potentially affected by the, the TOT changes. So if the board's comfortable with that, I would make that as a, as a motion. Though, we're not done with public input yet, sorry.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you, Jerry. Pardon? What?
May 21st.
That's the suggestion.
Mr. Parsons?
Parsons, singular. Thank you all for serving on the board. I know it takes a lot of work, and you're going exactly the direction I'd like you to go. I believe staff has done a really good job of pulling in staff input, but they have not reached out to the supporting group that could easily support them on this issue. I'm pleased to see that many of the changes, which are beyond administrative, are the exact type of inputs we would have given them if we had been asked specifically on things like exemptions for people who are tax exempt, which was very difficult in the current code. I do believe that as a general policy, when staff is preparing to take something to the Board of Supervisors, they should deliver a complete product, and that complete product is getting feedback on what the issues are. There may be some more issues that we haven't identified that should be brought up, and when staff brings something to the Board of Supervisors, they should be prepared to tell you if there's something contentious in there with the community, and then it'll be a 30-day period, as the ordinance says, for introducing an ordinance. However, I do think they need to do their homework before that first reading, and I believe in this case, there's an opportunity to do a little bit more homework. So if you would move that way, I'd appreciate it. I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else who would have to address the board on this item? I think we don't, I don't think we need a motion, we can just give direction.
Do we want to table, table the May 22nd?
Yeah, we'll just table the item till the May 22nd, 22nd meeting?
23rd.
Or 21st.
Is that all right?
21?
Second meeting in May.
May 21st. All right. Thank you. All righty. Then we will move to Department Item Number Four, Facility Services. Mr. Durfee, are you with us?
He's in the back. Paulus Mary.
Says General Mary Mary.
Yeah, well, that's right.
She's here.
Not Mr. Durfee, a little bit shorter.
That's right.
Chairman, members of the board, Mary Dietrich, Facility Services. The item for your consideration this afternoon or this morning is a request to award a job order contract to Fergoso Builders in the amount of $326,970 for the remodel and renovation of Building 305A in the Placer County Government Center. We're also requesting approval of a resolution to authorize the Director of Facility Services or his designee to execute this contract and to approve any supplemental job order contracts associated with this project pursuant to the county purchasing manual and/or the public contract code. We're asking also to approve a budget revision in the amount of $250,000 to increase the funding in the capital project using user fees that are budgeted in the Environmental Utilities budget. Generally speaking, the project location is located in the Placer County Government Center, and it's located in what we call the 300 ramp, which is over on the south side of, of the campus. These are larger buildings, both in, in size and in height. They're concrete floor buildings and occupied by users such as building maintenance, essential services, minimum security surplus, and the utilities division. These are all very utilitarian buildings and are used for shop-type purposes. The Capitol Improvements Committee, or, excuse me, the Capitol Improvements Division has evaluated these buildings in the context of the overall planning that's going on with the Government Center, and has determined that this area will remain in use for the corporation yard and the shop areas, and on that basis is proceeding with looking at various renovations in these buildings, because they do have great utility, given their size and the fact that they are on concrete slabs, which is important to the kinds of uses that are occurring within these buildings. Specifically, Building 305 is the shop area for the utilities division. This is going to be a complicated renovation and remodel, including improvements to the work area, circulation and exiting, extensive renovations of the restrooms and locker areas. It includes ADA and path of travel improvements, and extensive improvements to the mechanical systems, the electrical fire systems, and HVAC systems. A part of the buildings are the original constructed buildings in, in, from, from the 1940s, and other parts are, have improvements that probably date back at least 20 to 25 years ago. So this is a improvement that we do recommend. We believe that this will create a great utility as we move forward into the future in uses of these buildings, and would recommend your board's approval.
Any board comments?
Question. I'm going to presume that you've talked to Environmental Utilities, and they're okay with the transition transfer of 250,000 from their budget?
Absolutely. This is, this is a part of their budget and part of what they anticipate as part of their reserves. They set aside funding in their, from their rates to go towards these kinds of fixed assets. So this will be a very welcomed improvement on their behalf.
Any other comments? Anyone in the audience wish to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Item 4A, 1 and 2. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yerwer?
Yes.
Yerwer?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Now we will move to our 9:30 timed item, Facility Services, Environmental Engineering, 15th Amendment to the Agreement for Solid Waste Handling Services in Franchise Areas 2 and 3. Good morning, Mr. Durfee.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be up here this morning. You're correct, this is the 15th Amendment to the Agreement for Solid Waste Handling Services. The reason there's so many of these is on an annual basis, we have to amend them in order to do the various COLA adjustments and so forth. So just for the record, we don't just change them willy-nilly. I have three very specific requests and recommendations for your board this morning. First, that you conduct a public hearing and receive input on the proposed garbage collection fee adjustments in franchise areas 2 and 3, which include the unincorporated Placer County areas east of Colfax to the Nevada State Line. Second, that you approve the amendment with Placer County Eastern Regional Sanitary Landfill Inc. and Tahoe Truckee Disposal Company, Inc. for solid waste handling services to decrease the processing fees paid to ER Inc. to offset increased, pardon me, that should be
to decrease the processing fees paid to ERL, Inc. to offset increased, pardon me, that should be in, increase. There's a typo there. To offset increased landfill disposal fees and to incorporate adjusted garbage collection fees charged to the public for fiscal year 2013, 2014. This will result in no increase to the tipping fees at the material recovery facility and would, would result in increases of up to 2.8% for the garbage collection services. And I'll get into that in more detail in just a minute. And third, and finally, we'd ask that you make a finding pursuant to Section 21080B8 of the Public Resources Code, that the collection fees are derived directly from the cost of providing the services and are necessary to meet the operating expenses required for the maintenance and service and are therefore exempt from environmental review. Your Board will recall that we've contracted for approximately 25 years with this company to operate the MRF and landfill, formulated landfill, and to do collection services up in this area. And the company does, is a really good partner, does great customer service up in this area and is always really good to work with as we, as we go through various adjustments and so forth. And as a matter of fact, we've worked very closely with them over the last five or six years through the recession to hold the fees in this area down as low as possible. Your Board has taken several actions to actually decrease the amount of the fee that the county charges for its piece. And TTD ERL has waived and deferred increases. So we've, we've worked through the recession with them very closely in order to keep costs down. At this point in time, we do however, recommend taking an action to, to do some cost of living type increases to the collection services. As I stated earlier, there are no adjustments to the current ERL MRF tipping fees as proposed. Per the terms of their agreement, ERL, Inc. would be entitled to a 36 cents per ton or 0.85% COLA increase to the MRF processing fees and a 43 cents per ton or 3% increase to the disposal fees paid at the Lockwood landfill. However, rather than raise the fees to the customers, ERL, Inc. has agreed to forego the COLA on those two fees or those two portions of the fees and absorb the disposal fee increase paid at the Lockwood landfill in their, into their processing fees. So another action that we're trying to take in order to keep costs down. The actual collection fees though, we do believe need to be adjusted at this point in time. And there's two different franchise areas. Franchise Areas 2 and 3 are essentially the, the whole eastern side of the county from Colfax to the state line. And the fees have two different components. They have a, a service component, which is actually the cost to go out and collect the garbage out in the neighborhoods. And then a disposal component, which is the cost to tip the garbage at our facility. The service fee charged by TTD for collecting and transporting garbage, per the agreement, the calculated COLA for fiscal 13, 14 is 0.85%. Last year, TTD agreed to defer the, what would have been a 5.62% COLA for 12, 13 and apply that COLA in equal amounts over, over the following two years, so this year and next year. And this is important, I wanted, it's a little bit complex and I wanted to be sure everybody understands it. So what we did was we deferred what would have been a fairly large COLA last year. Over this year and next year, we split that in half. That would have been, in, in two pieces, that would have been 2.81% plus the 0.85% COLA for a total of 3.66% applied to the surface, pardon me, the service portion of the collection fees. As I stated earlier, we're not recommending any changes to the disposal fee. So there's not, no increase to that part. And then the third part of that fee is the special fee, which is the, essentially the franchise fee that's paid to the county for the franchise. Again, we're not recommending any change to that either. So the only component of the fee that's going up is the collection fee. The, all of the proposed fees are shown in Exhibit B of your package. There's an extensive list of them for different types of service. But as a couple of examples, the cost of a single can service is proposed to increase from what is a current $21.03 per month in Area 2 up to $21.62, so about a 60 cent increase in that, in that single can service, which is the most common service that we provide to residents. In Area 3, that's, that same service would go up from $18.32 to $18.81 per month. So the, the fees, the fee increases are approximately 60 to 70 cents per month for a single can service. The French, all of the property owners in franchise area 3 where collection is mandatory were mailed a postcard noticing the proposed garbage collection fee increases and this public hearing. And that, all of that notification was done in compliance with Prop 218. I hadn't heard this morning, and I'm going to lean on Ann a little bit, I hadn't heard whether we had received any protest letters. We, we've had 10 protest letters. Thank you, Ann. I apologize for not talking to you before the meeting. In order for you to implement, meant the proposed fee increases, your Board must conduct a public hearing and I'd recommend that you do that at this point in time and then take the specific actions. Should you, should you agree to adjust those fees, take the actions that I presented earlier. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have and would recommend that you proceed with the public hearing.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any comments from Board members?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to presume that the Public Resource Code finding that you're requesting us to make has been concurred with County Council?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, are you able to, at, at this time, talk a little bit about the agreement that we've been able to reach with the Eastern Regional Landfill relating to green waste?
Actually, I'd prefer, if you don't mind, I'd prefer to bring that back as a future item with a lot more detail. I could, I could sketch over it a little bit, but suffice to say that we are working on a plan that'll expand the green waste services up in this area. If you don't mind, I would, I would prefer to bring that back when we, when we actually have more detail.
Okay, it was my understanding that we'd already scheduled three weeks this summer that local residents could drop off with no charge?
That is correct, but I have to bring, I have to bring those forward to actually schedule those. And, and I don't have the dates with me today. That was an inelegant way to say that to you.
Thank you.
Any other Board comments? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address the Board on this item? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to Board for action.
Chairman Holmes, if, if I may, one thing that I would just like to suggest for the future and we may need to bring this back for a specific Board discussion. But I think in future, when we have any of these 218-type protest votes, we need to actually send people ballots to return. There, there's been a, a lot of confusion, not just about this, but about some other 218 stuff, about how, when, where to appropriately either support or oppose a rate increase. And so I just think in the future, it would probably serve us well as a county just to have an established process by which a ballot goes out to people so they do understand very clearly what the process is.
We'll be happy to revisit that for you. I think I'll work with County Council for different types of services, different types of utilities and so forth. The rules are somewhat different, so we will, we will refresh that and bring that back to you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
All right, hearing done, move approval.
Moved and seconded to move approval of the item, Facility Services item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. 4B, Property Management, Hidden Falls Regional Park Connectivity, Property Acquisitions. Mr. Rideout, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Mark Rideout, Facility Services. Very excited to be here today with this item. As Supervisor Holmes mentioned, it is the Hidden Falls Connectivity Acquisitions. We have several actions we'd like your Board to take today to complete this connection between Hidden Falls Regional Park and the Bear River to the north. Have a number of PowerPoint slides to share with you. If I can, which way do I click? So essentially, there are 23 acres of land that we're going to be acquiring various property interests across conservation easements, portions in fee from the Campbells, the Hadads, and Mizlouden. There's a resolution included in your package which will delegate authority to the Director of Facility Services to complete the acquisition. Should your Board wish to proceed? And then there are budget revisions to take care of the funding portions of this request. This is really the culmination of your Board's participation with Placer Land Trust and a variety of property conservation and public access projects that we've pursued since 2007 in this area. The PowerPoint to your right shows Hidden Falls Regional Park, this oddly shaped piece. The left portion is the 1,000 acres that's going to open in May to the public. There's the Blue Oaks Conservation Easement, 500 acres to the south of it. The portion that we're talking about today is circled here in red. And then these properties that go up to the Bear River, the Harvigo Bear River Preserve. For a number of years, the Board has directed the county to look at conservation in this area. Property management has looked at a number of alternatives to secure this connectivity that's not only for public access, but also creates wildlife corridors. And the unique thing about this and what has brought a lot of state and other dollars to us is the unique habitat benefits that this reflects. We essentially have an east-west watershed here in the Bear River. There's Coon Creek. And, and this creates a unique north-south connection for wildlife across these, in addition to the public, public access. We looked at a number of alternatives and earlier, well, I guess it was about the beginning of last year, we started talking with three property owners in the red circled area. This pink portion to the left is Hidden Falls Regional Park. This is owned by Hadad, Campbell, and the Loudon property. This piece to the north is the Placer Land Trust Taylor Ranch property. And through the county's participation in that acquisition, we secured trail rights across that. So for the last year or so, we've been focusing with these three property owners to secure rights across the yellow line, which would, would complete this final connection. We talked to the property owners, we received their approval to proceed with an appraisal for these property rights. We initially focused with Hadad on a fee title portion north of Coon Creek, about 11 acres here. And we all were also talking to them about a conservation easement to the south. With Campbell, we were similarly looking at a conservation easement. Both of those would give PCCP value and other conservation habitat values to the county in addition to the trail rights, which are north of Coon Creek. And then this little green triangle here with Loudon is essentially to connect that last little piece. So those are the three property owners that we worked with to secure appraisals last fall. We went through those, we talked with staff, we talked with various members of the public about the best way to package this. And we proposed to these property owners $130,000 to Hadad for 11.4 acres in fee and a 10-acre conservation easement. Campbell, we were looking at about 6 and 1/2 acres in fee. Again, that's this portion here with the jagged yellow line and then a 6-acre or 5.4 acre conservation easement. And then the corner here. Essentially, the property owners took this back, they reviewed it for several months. County staff worked with them, we had a back and forth process. And based on some transactions, which we understand happened in the Big Hill area, they felt that the value was higher than the appraisals reflected. And really, this relates to the unique property values that this opportunity presents. Essentially, staff in the county never recommend, or we don't like to recommend, purchasing things above fair market value. And in this situation, we realized that the unique location of these properties and the benefits to tie ultimately north of the Bear River as well. Essentially why we're here today. The actions that we're requesting of your Board, it's $290,600, which is about $180,000 above fair market value. And that's for the Hadad and Campbell properties. The Loudon property, they've requested fencing along this north property line. The Placer Land Trust, who owns this parcel to the north, has again expressed interest in partnering with us on these acquisitions and they're going to conduct that fencing. And just to step back into the larger landscape, ultimately with approval of this action, we will have 47 miles of trails that could ultimately be constructed through a future project from Hidden Falls Regional Park to the Bear River. That's about 5,000 acres of public access that we've partnered with the Placer Land Trust and Placer County on. And then if you go north of the Bear River with the Nevada County Land Trusts, there are about 7,000 acres that would be under conservation. And again, the real benefit here is that you have this north-south, north-south wildlife corridor going, going through. So to proceed with this proposal today, there are several actions that we'll request of your Board. It's to approve the Director's execution after we finalize the transactional documents. This has been noticed pursuant to the Public Contract Code or the Government Code. And then ultimately, any property interest would be needed to add to fixed asset list. So with that, if you have any questions today, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Questions from Board members? No, no questions from the Board. Anybody in the audience wish to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Staff recommendations?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the staff recommendation for Item 4B, Property Management, Hidden Falls Regional Park Connectivity, Property Acquisitions. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, thank you, Mark. We'll move to our 9:45 timed item, which is Tahoe Regional Planning Agency Regional Plan, Area Plans and Conformance Review Update. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. I'm Steve Yulno with the Community Development Resource Agency. And today we'll be providing you with an update on the status of the TRPA Regional Plan update and the county's continued involvement and coordination with TRPA on this effort. We last provided your update, your Board with an update on the regional plan in January. This was prior, or subsequent to the adoption of the regional plan by TRPA's Governing Board on December 12, 2012. Since that time, the plan, plan's adoption was legally challenged by the Friends of the Westshore and the Sierra Club prior to the deadline for filing a challenge. After the lawsuit was filed, TRPA made the decision to proceed with the plan implementation unless otherwise directed by the courts. One of the steps in moving forward towards implementation of this new plan has been the prioritization of the to-do list items. As you'll recall, the to-do list items were the items that were removed from the review of the plan so that the plan could be adopted in a timely manner. TRPA's staff brought forward the to-do list items to the Advisory Planning Commission. And the Advisory Planning Commission provided ranking and prioritization of that list to the Governing Board. In February, the Governing Board provided their staff with direction on the items that would be undertaken in the 2013 calendar year for implementation. Those items to be focused on were the mitigation measures contained with the, in the environmental impact statement for the regional plan, the review of the coverage transfers across hydrologic zones, the update and implementation of the shore zone ordinance, establishing a BMP Compliance Committee, and the review of the incentives within the plan for transfers outside town centers. In addition to the to-do list items, TRPA staff has also focused efforts on the release of the residential building allocations for the 2013 year. That item will be brought before their Governing Board tomorrow. County staff continues to work with TRPA staff as they work towards the implementation of the regional plan as well as the community plans that Crystal Jacobson will be providing you with an update on later today. Today, we also have Arlo Stockholm, the Regional Plan Manager for TRPA here today, who can answer any questions that you might have as well as update you on anything that I may have missed in this update. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or turn it over to Arlo if you have questions for him as well.
Any comments from Board members? Seeing none.
Good morning, Arlo Stockholm, Regional Planning Manager for TRPA. I don't have a presentation to give, I'm just here to answer any questions or provide any clarification for the Board. So thank you.
Anyone from the audience wish to make any comments on this? I will note that Ellie Waller, who is North Tahoe West Plan Team Member, has some public comment and I think the Board has been apprised of those. And the Clerk has a copy of the letter. Anyone else wish to address this item? All righty, thank you for the update. And now we will move to, these are getting me moving around, let's see. And now we will move to, these are getting me moving around, Isaiah. Item 5, Health Human Services, Environmental Health, Annual Adjustment of Environmental Health Fees. Mr. Wesley Nix.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. Wesley Nix, Director of Environmental Health. As you know, the Environmental Health Division provides essential mandated services to protect public health for our community by ensuring health standards are maintained in the retail food industry, and that hazardous materials and waste are managed properly, community drinking water sources are safe, solid waste is properly managed, and that proposals are reviewed for land use projects. Health permits and fees for these related projects and services are charged to ensure these services are delivered to our community. These fees are subject to an increase each year as prescribed in the Placer County Code at the rate published by the Department of Industrial Relations Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers in California. The adjustments are measured based on the difference between the 2008 annual average and the average for the most recent calendar year. So no base fees are increased in this fee schedule. The board has simply requested to ratify the environmental health fee schedule with the annual CPI adjusted rates. Can I answer any questions you might have regarding these?
Board members? I just want to thank you for reaching out to each of us and briefing us on this item before you brought it here.
Certainly, I know it hasn't gone before the board before, so.
Anyone in the audience have a, want to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to approve item 5A, Environmental Health, Annual Adjustment Environmental Health Fees. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And now we will adjourn as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Placer County Successor Agency to talk about item 6, Placer County Successor Agency, Department of Public Works, Soil Excavation and Off-Site Disposal. Mr. Kratz.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Peter Kratz with Public Works, here to present this item. It relates to the successor agency-owned property at 8784 North Lake Boulevard in Kings Beach, which is located on the Lake Tahoe side of Highway 28 towards the east side of town. I would refer to this land as a blighted property purchased by the former redevelopment agency back in 2007 that requires cleanup of fuel-contaminated soil and groundwater. Public Works was approached by the Department of Facility Services and the CEO last fall to assist in soil cleanup efforts. It made sense with having Public Works staff in Kings Beach to assist in this effort from an efficiency perspective. Action items today include approving documents for bidding and implementation of soil cleanup for an estimated cost of $264,700. Following completion of this soil cleanup effort, there will still be ongoing groundwater monitoring and likely groundwater remediation activities that could be expensive, and that is why there is what is called a corrective action plan totaling an estimated $705,000 to get the property to a fully remediated status and approval by the Lahont Regional Water Quality Control Board. The proposed effort is exempt from CEQA as indicated in the board memorandum. Funding for the proposed effort and future property remediation efforts is provided by the successor agency and is included in the CEO's proposed 1314 fiscal year budget. There is no net county cost affiliated with the effort. In conclusion, I respectfully request your board approve the actions 1 and 2 as written in the board memorandum before you, which includes authorizing Public Works to advertise for bids, and I stand before you to answer any questions you might have. And I do want to point out Brian Stewart in the audience, our senior engineer out of our Kings Beach office, he's really, he and his staff are the movers and shakers to make this effort happen. From an efficiency perspective, quickly, I want to say it also makes sense with other projects in the Kings Beach area, like our commercial core improvement project, from a coordination perspective, this is a highway property, making sure we coordinate it as best we can with our Kings Beach commercial core improvement project. So again, from that perspective and efficiency perspective, it makes a lot of sense to help Facility Services, help CEO in this matter, as we get this property cleaned up. Thanks.
Any questions? Supervisor Montgomery.
I just was wanting to make a clarification at this time, because the question came up yesterday at the Oversight Board meeting where we approved moving forward with this, hence it's on our agenda today. So the question came up, how did the estimate come to be? I explained that it was through our Department of Public Works, you guys have a process. The follow-up question on that is, so what happens if the bids come in over that? And I just wanted to clarify that it's our understanding that if the bids do come in over that, it will need to go back to the Oversight Board for approval, since we approved a specific dollar amount, and the Oversight Board has a fiduciary responsibility to the state as part of the dissolution act to make sure that we appropriately approve expenditures. So just as a heads up, if for some reason this should come in over that bid amount, it would need to come back to the Oversight Board for additional action, and then it would be coming back in front of this board for additional action.
Correct.
Thank you.
Right. And I would just say, my understanding with this bigger budget allowance of $705,000, there may be some leniency in there when we get the bids back, and we will be coming back to your board to hopefully award the low responsible bidder. If they're right in that 264 range, or even if they're a little bit higher, I think we'll have some leniency because we have a pretty good buffer to deal with the groundwater remediation, which is going to probably be required. And that'll be contingent upon what our groundwater monitoring results will look like down the line here over time. But thanks.
Any other board comments? Anyone in the audience wish to address the successor agency? Hearing none, we'll bring it back for action.
Item 6A, 1 and 2.
It's moved and seconded to approve item 6A, 1 and 2. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none? Thank you, sir. We will now reconvene as the Placer, oh, we're going to adjourn as the Placer County Successor Agency and reconvene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors. That concluded our department items. We have a 10-10 timed item, so I suggest that we take a nine-minute break. Is that a good idea?
Sure.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will come back into order and convene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors. We will now take up our 10-10 timed item, Community Development Resource Agency, Tahoe Basin Community Plan Update Status. Crystal Jacobson presenting. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. I'm Crystal Jacobson, I'm with Planning Services Division, and I'm here today to provide a report to you on our efforts to update our nine community plans in the Tahoe Basin. Just some brief background, as directed by your board, in July 2011, we've continued our efforts to work towards updating those nine plans and to implement the overall work program. We currently do maintain nine community and general plans in the basin. As part of this effort, we are consolidating those nine into one overarching policy document, which would include four different, what we're calling kind of sub-plan areas. Those plan areas have been identified for the purpose of developing four separate zoning codes or development codes with design guidelines and standards for each of those four plan areas. So ultimately, at the end of this work program, the overall work products that will come out of it is one overarching policy document, and then the four different kind of development code and design guidelines for these areas. The Westshore Plan Area, the Greater Tahoe City Plan Area, what's called North Tahoe West, and then the North Tahoe East Plan Area. Here's a map of those. So just to talk about progress to date, we have, from the very start, had ongoing coordination with TRPA, a lot of review of their regional plan update, as Steve had noted earlier in his presentation, and their code as it relates specifically to our update of the community plans. Specifically, when their plan was adopted in December, TRPA actually assigned a team of staff, TRPA staff, to our process, so we've been working with them as we've been making our way through our work program. We've also collected background materials, prepared an administrative draft background report. Public outreach has been ongoing for the last year. We've had nine community workshops to date, three town halls, stakeholder interviews, and the regular updates to the NITRAC, your board, and the Planning Commission. We've also prepared what we're calling preliminary draft district standards. These are for the commercial cores only and for the teams review. So we have teams for each four of these plan areas, and they've been working on visioning for land use and scale, and so we've developed these preliminary standards with them. And in addition to that, preliminary sort of draft zone maps. Those maps are reflective of the visioning work that they've done for land uses in the commercial core areas of their plan area. We also held one planning, we've been to the Planning Commission a few times, but have held one Planning Commission workshop to address some key issues that came up. That workshop was at the end of January, kind of sought some direction from the Planning Commission on the work that we've done to date. And then more recently, over the last couple of months, we've been working to contract with consultants and developed a work program, work of scope, to actually prepare the policy document, which will also include a market, economic market analysis, which will help to kind of feed into or serve as background material for the policy document. And then it will also include a Kings Beach Vision Shiret, and I'll talk more about that process here in a minute. But this work, this overall effort, the preparation of these documents is being funded through grant funds that we got through the California Strategic Growth Council as part of the Tahoe Basin Partnership for Sustainable Communities. So it's a bunch of different organizations in the basin that went together, wrote a grant, and so this funding is coming from that grant. So just to give an overview real quick of the community workshops to date, the purpose, again, of those workshops is to facilitate plan area team working group sessions, so the teams that we have formulated, they're citizen advisory groups, they've been meeting at these workshops. To date, the focus has been on addressing sort of a vision, overall vision for land use and scale. We're largely finished, we've been meeting separately with each team right now, just to have focus meetings. Some common themes, concerns, and I think I've talked about this before, but just real quick to go over it again, some common themes that we've heard from these teams is a desire to maintain kind of a small mountain town feel to these communities, maintaining and proving outdoor recreational destination as kind of a focus, also maintaining or focusing on future multimodal transportation and walkability within the communities, providing for a mix of uses in the neighborhood and town center communities, improving pedestrian and bike connections to recreational opportunities and then in-between communities, so making sure that we have those connections from one town to the next. Planning for public gathering places, that's been, we've heard that over and over again. Preserving the natural resources, and then really a focus on economic sustainability and creating communities where people can live, work, and play. So kind of an overall sustainability effort. So some of the bigger issues that we've identified to date are not issues, but just concerns that we've been talking about have to do with mixed use, allowing mixed use in the commercial cores, scale and height, the vision for the plan areas and the standards that will be developed around scale and height. And then the Tahoe City Downtown Stakeholder Commercial Core Vision Options Plan has been this overall, a topic that keeps coming up at various different meetings. So I wanted to talk about these things, these three things, real quick with you. So mixed use has, again, been a common theme during these community meetings. We've heard from all the teams, a desire to incorporate mixed use into the commercial cores isn't otherwise allowed to date in terms of allowing for residential uses in the commercial cores. So they've expressed an interest with this, and this approach is consistent with TRPA's approved regional plan. So the regional plan calls for a mix of uses inside of the, all the sort of commercial, what they call commercial centers in the basin. The teams have worked to incorporate this into their land use, the vision that they had done with their land use mapping. So what we've done is created these preliminary maps, hard to see here, but I know I included some copies of this in your packet. These are maps that are reflective of the work that the teams have done. They all include, it's just the commercial core areas of the four planning areas, and they all include a mixed use type of component to the zoning. So real quick, what is mixed use? For those of you that are unaware, it's really the use of a building, set of buildings or a neighborhood for more than one purpose. It typically combines commercial and residential type of uses in the same area. It can exclude residential in some cases, but more often than not, it includes it. And it includes a different kind of variety of mix of housing types. So it could be condos, it could be single-family residences, any type of mixed use where you've got sort of the residential and commercial in close proximity, the idea is to have pedestrian-oriented development. It is seen, mixed use development is seen as a central smart growth principle in the planning world and a central strategy to get that pedestrian-oriented development, to have people out and about. It's actually defined by, I'm not going to read this, but it's defined by the American Planning Association, so it is, it's a tool, a very common tool that planners use as a way to create for pedestrian-oriented development. Here's just some examples. It can take very different shapes. You could have mixed use that, you know, is kind of a, I don't know if this is working, but a two-story type of approach, smaller scale. You could also have it, you know, go up to four stories, as you see over here on the left. But what a common theme that you see in mixed use is this, these sort of public gathering areas, plazas or sidewalks that can accommodate pedestrian movement. So one of the other issues that came up had to do with scale and heights, sort of talking about the scale of a community, how high they're going to be ultimately, and what would be allowed. They worked to address the scale when they talked about mapping of their vision for the commercial cores the teams have. One of the common themes, again, they've, all the teams have expressed a concern of limiting heights on the lakeside development as a way to improve, improve or maintain, preserve Lake Vista. So we've heard that over and over again, is to not obstruct the lake views. I will point out that the parameters of this, of height and scale, are really set forth in TRPA's regional plan and code. However, they do give the local jurisdictions the ability to further refine the, refine scale, so you could bring it down if you'd like. Under the code, the TRPA's Regional Plan and Code, there are three areas in Placer County that are designated town center overlays. So these are areas where there's a little bit more opportunity for increased height, increased density, and those are Tahoe City, Kings Beach, and North State Lines. So that's probably where you're going to see the higher allowances with regard to scale of the buildings. So town centers under the code are allowed a height of up to 56 feet and four stories. So this is based on some required findings that you need to make based on the TRPA code. This is Chapter 13, I included a copy of that in your staff report package as well. So what could happen ultimately is that your board could decide that they don't necessarily want to see 56 feet in those town centers, maybe something a little bit smaller. So you do have the ability to bring it down if you want, or allow for the full height of 56 feet, assuming it met those findings. So all commercial core areas outside of the town centers, so something, you know, Tahoma, Sunnyside, Tahoe Vista, those types of areas, the smaller commercial cores, would be, they're limited to 42 feet based upon the TRPA code. So they don't have the opportunity to go as high. So the other issue to talk about is that Tahoe, what's called the Tahoe City, it's a commercial core downtown stakeholder vision. I know I've talked about this before, but it's just something that keeps coming up over and over again, so I just want to hit on it really quick. With the recent purchase of the Tahoe City Golf Course, it resulted in a series of design workshops last year, separate from our process, and it was geared at creating kind of a vision, vision options for the Tahoe City commercial area. This was an effort sponsored by the downtown business owners, and then the Tahoe City PUD, and the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. So it resulted in a vision options plan, which I've got a copy of the map here, and I'll show you in a minute. It includes sort of key design principles and concepts. We did hold a focus meeting with our Tahoe City team to kind of talk about that plan. The teams have expressed a desire for some more dialogue around that vision options plan, and so we have, we will have some additional meetings, and I'll talk here about that in just a second. But here's a copy of that, that plan that was produced. And so with Next Steps, that brings me here to Next Steps. We are moving into this next phase of our work program where we're going to be getting, we're beginning to actually prepare these, the documents with TRPA, with their team of staff that they've assigned to our process, and it's really to ensure conformance with the regional plan and the code. So that policy document development will include further public outreach, and it's designed really to integrate with the public outreach that we've done to date. It will include this Kings Beach Vision Shiret. So the Shiret is kind of an intensified design workshop, it'll be a three-day type of workshop where you seek public input, we'll be working with the team. In this case, what will end up coming out of it is that you end up with graphical representations of the vision, so lots of illustrations and renderings that represent the community's vision, that will then feed into the policy document. It's important to note that this is going to be, the scope of this kind of, is really going to be around the commercial core and how it relates to the public beaches. So we're really going to just focus on those areas there in Kings Beach with the public beach area. and then the commercial core to the rear of that. The consultants that are going to be hosting and conducting the Shiret are the same folks that did the Tahoe City Vision Options Plan. And so as part of our overall program, work program, we have also created a process where we're going to have this Tahoe City vision, visioning, what we're calling an augmentation modification workshop. And it's going to be a public workshop. We'll have our team there, the Tahoe City team there. And they'll be actually able to work with the design consultants to take a better look at that vision options plan and see if there's any desire to augment it or modify it to be in line with their vision. And then we would feed that into the community plan accordingly. And then, so, so those are two components of public outreach that will occur this summer. We anticipate the vision, the Kings Beach Vision Shiret to get launched. I initially planned on early June. It looks like it's going to be late June. And then the Tahoe City Visioning Augmentation Modification Workshop would, would be directly following that. In addition to that, we'll have other topical workshops related to various specific elements of the community plan policy document as that moves along, things like environmental restoration, traffic circulation. They'll be more top, topically based. And so then, and again, we are focusing, or excuse me, conducting focused meetings with individual plan area teams where we need to. We have a few more that we need to do with those teams to kind of iron out the land use and scale. The next one I just noted on here is May fourteenth. It's actually two meetings the same night from four to eight. They'll be in the same room. We'll work both, both teams at the same night. And that'll be the North Tahoe West, North Tahoe East meetings. So from four to eight, and that's at the North Tahoe Event Center in Kings Beach. And then we'll be returning to the Planning Commission for status reports and to hold workshops when necessary. So if issues are identified that we need to bring before the Commission for Direction, we will do that. And then as always, can, regular updates to the NITRAC and to your board and TRPA. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, Arlo is here to answer any questions that you might have about area plan conformance as it relates to, to our process.
Crystal, any comments? Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah. Thank you, Crystal, for a very informative presentation. I'm looking at some of the comments that were submitted by Ellie Waller. And there's one that I just wanted to get a little bit of a clarification on because I'm not clear on what she's referring to. She talks about map, page thirty-four in our packet, which shows the North Tahoe West Plan Area. And she refers to something as being designated, a twelve-acre parcel is being designated as a tourist area. And I'm just not seeing this on this map.
No, I don't have large, a large copy of the map in front of me, but I, we don't have any tourist area identified in that plan in the North Tahoe West. So maybe she's meaning the North Tahoe East where you've got the state line.
Yeah.
Area.
She says, I, I, draft map included in the packet identified as page thirty-four. A twelve-acre property currently not in our community plan being represented as tourist. I don't see that on here. And does that ring any bells with you at all?
No.
Okay.
It doesn't.
Yeah, it didn't ring me either. So thank you. I just really was looking for a clarification on that. On the Kings Beach Visioning Shiret, this is something that I'm very supportive of. I think it's really important that we have those discussions, we as the county, with our partners, the fire department, the PUD, the other public entities such as the California Tahoe Conservancy and state parks about, you know, what is that interaction going to be as it relates to the new regional plan update guidelines? And, you know, how are we going to make that work? Because we, we are all going to have to figure out ways to become compliant with the regional plan update and make sure that whatever we move forward with falls under those guidelines and our partners are fully on board with us in doing that. So I'm, I'm actually very pleased that we're going to be moving forward with the Shiret. And I think it really will serve a purpose that will be very helpful to the Northeast Plan Team. I always get the name wrong. Because I think it will help them, you know, finish their process of, of the visioning that they're working on right now for their community. So really, those are my only comments on it, other than to thank you as always for, you know, a very informative update. And really extremely appreciative of how much time and effort you personally have put into this. I know you have a lot on your plate beyond just these community plan updates. But I sincerely appreciate the time and effort you've put into it and want to take the opportunity to publicly thank you.
Any other comments from board members? You're good? Okay. Anybody in the audience wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none. Thank you very much for a very informative update. And that concludes our board meeting items. And we will now adjourn to closed session.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss one item of anticipated litigation. Ready? The board's returned from closed session where they discussed the one item of anticipated litigation and gave direction to council. That concludes the closed session report.